Head and call the order, the Planning Commission meeting for September fifth, two thousand seventeen. First on our agenda is to adopt the agenda, any additions or adjustments?
We do not have any.
Hearing none, I'll move that we approve the agenda as presented, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will proceed accordingly. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen Planning Commission meeting. I was not present, so of those that were present, anybody have any adjustments or revisions, and I'd entertain a motion.
Just one correction, item six adjournment, it says a motion was made by Chairman Ennivold. I'm a chairman, I need a raise.
Zero plus zero is zero.
Or times.
Times and multiply.
Alright, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the change noted with Commissioner Ennivold.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, moving on to our next item is a discussion item tonight, we've got the Shoreland Overlay District Ordinance. Who's going to start us off with that this evening?
I will. And I, I would say this is probably one of those meetings where I'm going to talk more than I want to. So please feel free to jump in if I say something that you don't understand, I can obviously rephrase and try to say it differently. In preparing for this meeting and kind of getting into the meat of the Shoreland Overlay District Ordinance, it is highly complex, so tonight I'm not trying to go into every single detail tonight, I really want to target the, the main aspects of what the ordinance is intended to do, some of the changes that we need to make, and then look for some direction towards the end after we kind of layer in some background information on general direction for how to proceed moving forward. So, don't intend to cover every minute detail of the ordinance tonight, so please, I hope you didn't prepare thinking we're going to go line by line or word by word, but Todd, if you have any of those, I'd be fine doing that tonight. So, I did not include this map in the materials before you tonight, but this just generally starts to identify the total area that's covered within the city of Victoria by our Shoreland Overlay District. I will say this is not paint a complete picture. If you read through just the general details of what's included in the Shoreland provisions, it's everything within a thousand feet of a high water level of a lake, plus there are some tributaries. So what isn't on this map, I don't have all of the tributaries mapped. In some cases, those areas are already covered by some of the thousand-foot buffer areas that are shown on this map. But I just wanted to at least give you that snapshot upfront of, these are kind of the areas that are currently bounded by, and you can even see as we continue to grow south and west, some of those other areas that we'll grow into that are still going to be encumbered with a Shoreland Overlay District. And, we've talked a lot as new developments have come on, and certainly an emphasis even with our ordinance revisions to go more towards straight zoning. But just to give you all a clear picture of kind of the staff side of new development proposals, anytime we have something that had been proposed as a PUD that gets presented to the city or applied for, we're communicating with the DNR, going through their procedural process for reviewing that development within a Shoreland Ordinance because our ordinance requires that we do so. And certainly state statute will continue to do that. But if we get our ordinance updated to be consistent with all the provisions of the current model ordinance, again, not everything in that model ordinance has to be adopted verbatim, but the key content that we need to adopt, we won't have to do that regular check-in with the DNR if they've essentially approved our ordinance as it is. Because we haven't made any updates holistically since they passed the ninety-nine model ordinance, we basically still need to check in on a regular basis. To just give you a little bit clearer idea of how the Shoreland fits with everything else, we're really talking about just layering on higher levels of regulation when we talk about the Shoreland Overlay District. In many cases, as you'll see on this map, our other zoning districts come into play and have some base level information, basically a Shoreland supersedes, where its regulations are more stringent than what the base zoning district is on the adjoining parcel. Even if it is within that thousand feet, the Shoreland's going to trump a lot of what happens. And today, because we've done so much of our recent development by PUDs, similar to how the city has said, PUDs can provide some flexibility to the state, and if you read any part of that model ordinance that talked about PUDs, they still allow for that flexibility with the Shoreland Overlay District. But, similar to how, again, our regulations have been, they're looking for a higher sense of preservation of those critical areas within that Shoreland area. Additionally, looking for general open space preservation and not as much density the closer you are to a lake. Certainly there, and we'll get probably into a little bit more of the specifics, but the state, when they created this ordinance, they also provided kind of a matrix to help people identify where priority or preferences made. So they basically have things spelled out in tiers, and we have a couple graphics coming up on that. But, again, preference overall or intent here is that we're trying to have less density the closer we are to a lake and allow for greater densities the further we get away from them. So, just wanted to paint that. I didn't have this in that memo, but if you were curious of the three classifications, what they really mean, essentially all of the definitions for these different lake types have to do with size and the amount of development that's already occurred on them. So, we were a little bit unique in the fact that we are a community that has all three classifications in our jurisdiction. So you can see those specific examples at the second bullet point ever under each type of lake. Most of our lakes end up in that recreational development lake. Almost the majority of the lakes that you'd see current development happening around fall into that category. Do you have a couple, Carl Cry, Saint Joe, which actually lives in the city of Chanhassen, but because of that thousand feet, there are portions of Victoria that are within a thousand feet of Saint Joe. Sunny is, in some people's minds, attached to Lake Zumba, but kind of interesting that they're different classifications, so Zumba being a recreational development lake and Sunny being a natural environment lake, only has to do with the fact that there has been no development around Sunny because it's in Carver Park Reserve, so it falls into that natural environment lake. It's also relatively small in comparison to Zumba as well. And then Stone also in the Carver Park Reserve, and then Tamarack sits just kind of southeast of the, I knew I was going to forget it. East side of Rolling Acres Road. What's the interlock in?
Swiss Mountain.
Thank you, Swiss Mountain. Southeast of Swiss Mountain is where Tamarack Lake is. Any questions on this? I wouldn't concentrate a whole lot on making sure that we have X number of acres and certain developments, those have already been classified for us to date, so just-
Curiosity, Sunny is actually connected to?
There's a culvert that connects the two, so they actually, hydraulically, they operate differently, like they're not functionally the same, but most people, if you looked at a, at an aerial, it looks like they're generally connected.
But you can't navigate between them?
Correct, yeah, there's actually a trail that goes right over top of the culvert, so if you've biked through Carver Park Reserve, there's a little trail crossing that goes right across between the two.
Ben, you said something that I want to make sure I understand the nuance. You said that those classifications for those lakes are established based on how they had been developed to date? Is there the potential for a classification to change? Just understood that it is what it is and it's intended to stay that way?
I would say it generally is what it is and it will be intended to stay that way. As you start looking at particularly the natural, natural environment lakes, what you'll find is because today they don't have a lot of development around there, they're actually the type of lake that has the highest level of protections within any of the Shoreland District regulations, so the opportunity to develop at the same rate as a recreational development lake or a general development lake just isn't feasible. So, you can certainly increase density, so to speak, around a natural environment lake from how it is today. Like Marsh Lake is an example, there's one homestead, farmstead that is on the south side of that lake, really nothing much else that touches it. Over time, there will be portions of property around it that do develop, but there's different setback requirements and even some preservation requirements that are a little bit more stringent than, say, Wasserman.
So there's no lake currently either inside the city limits or in the planned future growth of the city that may be undeveloped now, but it's intended to be developed around in the future? That scenario doesn't necessarily exist?
Usually you're not going to see a wholesale change in that classification just based upon how these ordinance are generally set up. Think the state kind of looked at, you know, we've got all of this development happening around the state, so the model ordinance really addresses the whole state, not just the metro area, so to speak. So, protecting those lakes that haven't been encumbered with development, I think was part of the foresight that they saw in creating this ordinance.
Thanks.
Okay. So just to spell out really quick, kind of the intent of what the model ordinance was, again, protecting just the shorelands and all public water bodies. For us, it tends to be lakes, some of those tributary areas that I referred to, other communities that have rivers or other streams, creeks through them, some of those are also protected under Shoreland rules. The difference between a kind of a water body like a lake and a river is the Shoreland area that has to fall within this classification of the overlay is different. Lakes are usually everything within a thousand feet of it. Rivers and streams are generally only three hundred feet from kind of wherever that high water elevation is of that, that water body. So similar to all zoning regulations, really the intent is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the upland areas surrounding water bodies. What I definitely want to make sure everyone understands is, reading the regulations of that model ordinance verbatim and expecting that we're supposed to hold to all of them is incorrect. So, the state went, again, thinking about the state as a whole, and said if you don't have zoning regulations already that kind of deal with these sensitive natural environment areas, here's kind of how you can set your entire ordinance up. So it reads like you could almost insert Victoria into any of those name breaks, and it would probably be fine, I just don't know that for how we've developed today and what some of our community priorities are, that we would wholesale just take the model ordinance and say, yep, we're good with that. And we'll kind of get into why, but-
Ben, what exposure do we have as a community that hasn't been developed other than Marsh Lake?
What do you mean?
What, like repairing lots or potential lots do we have left in our community? Other than, everything's pretty much developed, I believe.
You know, we still have some properties around Wasserman that have development potential. Carl Cry Lake, we only have maybe two-thirds of that lake shoreline that's within our current city limits, so there's still development potential around it. And then we'll move into our orderly annexation area over time. And Pearson's Lake certainly is a big lake that does have quite a bit of development on it, but also a lot of areas that could see redevelopment or new development in the future that are acreages or even large farmsteads that are still around that, that water body.
Okay, thank you.
Can I build on that question?
Sure.
Because you made me think of something in terms of, for all those properties that have already been developed, how, how does the new direction apply to those?
A lot of what we're going to walk through tonight is, again, I don't think that we're intending or that we've done anything wrong, I actually think even though we haven't adopted an updated Shoreland Ordinance that's compliant with the state kind of model and some of their requirements, I don't think we've been completely off because we've been in this check and balance through the PUD process. So I think a lot of what we've done, we just need to, similar to how we did the base zoning districts, we now just need to translate what we've been doing as good practice into a updated ordinance.
Right, but as we, as we update the ordinance, even though previous developments have been built
Yep.
years ago under a prior ordinance,
Yep.
that, aspects of that new ordinance would apply if various changes to those properties were made.
Correct, one of the areas that we're not going to spend a ton of time on, but definitely would acknowledge is even our existing ordinance and what our future ordinance will have is deals with lots adopted prior to any new regulations coming in. So, even our current ordinance says lots of record before XX date. Here's some specific pass that you can follow to still conform with the intent of the rules, but maybe be similar to properties that it's next to that were developed in the seventies or sixties or even before that timeframe.
Yeah, so those homes are expanded, they'll, they'll be faced with conforming in some way with the current, most recent version of the code or-
Correct.
accessory structures or all-
There will be some, some areas that certainly the, any new changes that are made will be applied to existing properties, but not to the extent that people would see a drastic change in how they're able to use their properties today, if that makes sense. So we're not retroactively going back and saying, all of this area is now wrong and needs to comply with something different. We're really looking at everything moving forward for the most part, and then we'll, we'll have provisions that acknowledge that things were a little bit different before these went into place. Let's make sure that everyone still knows how to navigate their use of their property.
And do we also, do we take an effort to look at the impact in creating non-conformities? Is that part of the process?
Yes.
So, as we look at these regulations, we'd have an understanding of what the potential impact for non-conformities would be?
Correct, and that's why, you know, a little bit later tonight when we start looking at what kind of direction do we want to take, I think there's some good examples that we can look at as to why we might look at a blended approach from what the state has to even one of the example communities that I provided. Just to deal with some of these interesting pieces that Victoria seems to have that don't always come into play, I'd say as across the board with other communities that we would look at.
Assuming we'll address provisions, those we're seeing on Leconia, Prior Lake, and Tucker, we know they're tearing things down and rebuilding, maybe some sort of direction around that?
Yeah, so our, our existing lot of record provisions today, because we have some properties that have actually been turned over more recently around Smithtown Bay of Minnetonka, same thing applies, I mean, there's impervious surface regulations, there's kind of a, an area that they can improve upon. If we want to talk more specifically about things we don't want to see, be happy to do that. I don't know that we'll get to that level of detail tonight, though.
Thank you.
Ben, looking at some of the dates with this Shoreland ordinance, right on your page you have up here, it says nineteen ninety-nine DNR model ordinance, but the text as I read it is all dated nineteen ninety.
Correct.
Is that when they started this process?
Correct, yes.
So really what we're looking at is up to a twenty-seven-year-old model,
Correct.
if you will, so like everything else, zones, uses, all that, it changes. So, this could be outdated as we adopt it or look at it.
And I think you'll see a lot of what's referenced in terms of uses in this ordinance was a lot of what was being built at the time, so there's a lot of reference to single, duplex, triplex, and four-unit buildings. Those aren't necessarily, four-unit buildings aren't townhomes at all. I mean, if you read through the definition, that was really four units that are, live on one property, so it might have been a rental situation, could have been a condo. But that's generally what was being seen at the time in nineteen ninety-nine, and certainly we have things like villas, twin homes. I mean, you pick your nomenclature, but I mean, we, we just have different product that's being built today. So yes, we'll take some adaptation and acknowledge that the products that we're being confronted with now also need to be addressed through this ordinance, it's not just those four typical things that were in the model.
Right, I see a lot more modern products that are more earth-friendly, you know,
Correct.
conservation-friendly, within the last twenty years, a lot, so keep that all in mind, I guess, is a good idea.
Yep. And then the last bullet that I have on here, context-sensitive regulations. So as I kind of noted before, as we look at those three different lake classifications that we have, the natural environment lakes, I mean, the name should generally say it all, really trying to protect what is a natural environment condition, so it hasn't seen a lot of development. Higher level of preference to preserve areas around those is generally how a lot of the state's model ordinance has been set up, and some things that we'll, I think, discuss and kind of think about as we look at what direction are we moving with regard to the lakes that we have that fall under that classification. General development lakes, I mean, the, the best example to think about is that everyone just kind of understands is Lake Minnetonka, it's a general development lake, has had quite a bit of development all the way around it. So lot sizes, some of the lot characteristics tend to be a little bit less stringent. Certainly, and obviously it wasn't around when the state was going through this process, but when you have that much development around a lake that's across multiple jurisdictions, where you talk about counties, cities, whatever, would have been probably a very tough sell had the state produced a model ordinance for general development lakes that all of a sudden like drastically changed development requirements, but they still put a lot of meat in there in terms of like how do we treat the critical fifty feet or that, that distance from the high water level in terms of development impacts, whether it's tree preservation or just shoreline restoration, things like beaches, those have all come into play. That lake in particular has its own regulating body that oversees what happens on Lake Minnetonka, so we don't talk a ton about it because they've got this whole other group that has their own rules as well. But just something to think about, we'll also talk about not only repairing and non-repairing lots, but sewored and unsewored. A lot of the city's current regulations that were in place happened when a large majority of the lakes in town weren't sewored or they were sewored by systems that are not as well-equipped as what we would see with new development today. So a lot of our provisions call for larger repairing lots than what the model ordinance does, and a lot of that has to do with you may have a system that only deals with a portion of your waste, so you need to accommodate some other provisions within your property. So if you're unsewored, you need to provide for either a septic or some similar type of system. So that's one of the reasons you'll see a larger, larger lot sizes for unsewored property. So just to give a quick snapshot, compare the whole unsewored and sewored lakes. So the top ones, and these are the two that I'd say we'll probably see the most with regard to new development, primarily because the two lakes that are within our jurisdiction or feed into a thousand feet of our jurisdiction, Lake Minnetonka that we talked about, we just have the one partial bay of Smithtown in the city and Bavaria Lake that's actually in the city of Chaska. We're within, we have some portions of Laketown that are within a thousand feet of that, but generally we won't deal with them. So, natural environment and recreational development lakes, kind of what I was talking about before, you can see, so unsewored is the stacked provisions on the left, and then sewored lake provisions, the stacked items on the right. Lot sizes change, lot widths change, generally looking for just preserving larger areas when it's not sewored because they have other things to accommodate within that property. And what I'd also say about the, the DNR model ordinance is, just to reiterate what I had said before, we are allowed to do PUDs. We currently have a process that hopefully gets a little bit more streamlined when we've updated in compliance with the state requirements. But we still allow for some of that flexibility, and what I'd say, a large amount of our development to date has done smaller lot sizes than what you see listed on the top part of this page because we are doing good preservation practice within that critical area of the shorelands. And I'll show you some of those examples in a little bit. So Wasserman Lake, one example, three different plats that came through, so three different PUDs that were identified here. Here's the base requirements that's in that model ordinance. So repairing lots would be anything that physically touches Wasserman Lake. There's one area in particular that did elect to have larger lots and touch the high water level of Wasserman. And then non-repairing lots, fifteen thousand square feet. I think if you looked at Lake Wasserman Ridge, that would be the Ryland that became the Cal-Atlantic property. A lot of those lots that end up being a quarter acre, so they're actually a little bit smaller than that fifteen thousand square feet. But again, and what you'll see on the subsequent slides is there's just a greater amount of open space preservation, and again, pulling back the developed portion of property away from that lake through preservation of kind of those repairing lots into a city-owned outlot. There's a lot going on in the slides, so focus more on the, on the lower part here. So the purple kind of areas identify those areas that were dedicated to the city. So you can see that project I was referring to before, Lake Wasserman Ridge. Lots of open space, natural corridors, there certainly are a lot of wetlands there, but they pulled that repairing edge back before they started having any of the lots being developed. Have a trail connection that weaves its way through that repairing lot. Lakeside Estates, that would be the Polte development that's there, they elected to have seven lots. They're all actually over an acre in size, so they went beyond even what the minimum would be had they not done a PUD. They do have a little bit of bluff line through a couple of the lots, not all of them have a bluff, some of them just have a little steep slope. And then Wasserman Lake Woods, this is on the east side here. You can see that repairing lot gets down to about thirty feet in width where the hand is right here, and then widens out as it gets closer to some of those wetland features. And you can see pretty clearly those lot size differences. So the more there was repairing area preserved through that development, kind of the smaller the lots tended to get. But even these first couple light lots into Wasserman Lake Woods ended up being smaller than what a repairing lot standard would be. So looking for that trade-off of preserving the, the critical areas of development to allow for a development to occur here.
Ben, you bring up a great point, I'm seeing a trend the last eight to ten years where you're saying, oh, we're just creating an outlot per se to create more non-repairing lots to increase density, is that something we should be concerned about? Or something that just is what it is?
It's a, it's a delicate balance, because if you recall, our comp plan sets some minimum density requirements, and I, I know some of you were here when we had Hawks Point being proposed, and they did a lot to create some repairing lots there and tried to get a lot size for the non-repairing that still met our, just our straight zoning ordinance at the time. But because they didn't meet that one and a half units per acre, they ended up coming back with a PUD to get a couple of those lots a little bit tighter. So certainly I think we need to understand that there's going to be some development proposals where that, that value of having repairing lots is going to be wanted by the building community. But there's also probably some high-key objectives that the city has in terms of protecting lake quality and general access to the lake. And how we do that might change from what it has been to what we do through our comprehensive plan update. But we are generally trying to make sure that we achieve our density guidelines while still protecting the environment. And we just have a lot of unique qualities that aren't seen in other communities because of that first slide that I showed you where- we just have a lot of unique qualities that aren't seen in other communities because of that first slide that I showed you where we have quite a bit of our existing community within a shoreline district.
I was surprised with it, actually. There's that much coverage.
I mean, as we grow south, aside from Marsh Lake and Pearson's, we have quite a bit of open area that's not encumbered. Um, but we do have quite a bit to the west as we grow that way that'll have um, they, it just needs a little bit more thought to make sure that these new regulations kind of balance both our density objectives as well as some of that natural um, preservation objective.
Thank you.
Using this example on the screen, over to the right, for example, I'm not so sure that um, you would just say that the contractor won, or that just the city won, and both, probably they both, they both won, right?
Sure.
From a contract, from a developer's standpoint, not a contractor, developer's standpoint, he's getting additional lots at a higher density. Um, but the trade-off is the the city wins because the city can now manage that shoreline.
Correct.
In a very different way than if it was um, owned by the by the homeowners.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's a win, like in this case, it's, it's a, it's probably a win-win and, you know, the downside for the potential homeowner, well, either it's a downside because you don't have lake frontage, or it's an upside because you don't have to manage your lake frontage. But you get the lake, lake views and, you know, the experience of of lakefront property, so.
Trend that I've seen is they're creating to avoid tax value and create density as they're creating that outlot which fall, which has all the repairian rights, which is then creating an association. So they have a common dock, common use of that land. I'm just seeing more and more of it as we move forward.
So. It's an interesting question, though, because you're right, from a, from a tax base, is that a, is that a fair trade-off for the city? The city now gets to manage that land, but it's also, it's a different tax structure because of the the lake frontage.
It's a, it's a tough principle to really give you a straight answer on, because if we just looked at a a non-lake lot, let's say it has no steep slopes, no bluff, let's just say we're talking about a large parcel that can be developed, and it was an acre in size. If, if we could trade one acre property for, for R1 lots, the tax value out of four R1 lots is probably higher than what we're gonna get out of one acre lot, more than likely.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great point.
Value of structure.
Correct. At the same time, and kind of even what came out from some of the public comments when we were reviewing Waterford Landing, there's still that uh, unsurety by the um, existing lake residents of is more lots even with one access point creating a higher level of usage on a lake than fewer large lot, single ownership uh, people. So I don't know that that's a hundred percent um.
And even that's a more complex question.
Right, equal across the board. But.
In the way that that example that you cited was being managed or limited.
Correct.
Is one scenario.
Mm-hmm.
You know, where there's a single boat going to be used one at a time, as opposed to another potential type of development that would give that access, but a whole bunch of people have common access, that would, those are two drastically different use case scenarios.
Correct. So the only reason I have those three graphics on the top of this slide, um, we do send out um, kind of a flyer, if you will, at the beginning of every year. As we've had development in some of these neighborhoods, not all the lots end up being occupied right away or built out right away. Uh, so it gives them a little bit more of uh, information as to whether or not they have a repairian lot. If they do, what can they do with that? If they don't have a repairian lot, what's that really mean? Um, because we do get inquiries of like, oh, I heard that the city owns that property between me and the lake, you know, I'd really like to see it a little bit clearer from my deck or from my great room, from my house. Um, so what kinds of things could we do? So this attempts to kind of fill that out. Uh, this graphic on the right, I think we had a a past employee that helped put that together. Just pretty clearly starts to identify some of the complexities in a, in a simple form for residents to understand. Um, but anyone that moves in and hears shoreline overlay district, and then you read through a couple pages, you're like, somebody just spell it out for me, please, because it's just that complex. Um, so then to look at, so if this lower area that translates into this slot, you can see um, the zoning above it, so this kind of blue dotted line is that thousand feet from the shoreline. So there's a pretty significant swath of property uh, that falls within that. Again, because all these were done as PUDs, there's some uniformity within each of them uh, because of the various trade-offs that they did. Even if you compared some of the non-repairian lots in the the Polte or the Lakeside Estates development to what was done on Lake Wasserman Ridge, or even the Wasserman Lake Woods. Um, there's a lot of common themes, and I think that's when we were going through, uh, how do we get away from this constant PUD thing if we already know kind of what our expectation is for development patterns? I think what we should be looking for as we look at updating the shoreline overlay district is how do we continue to utilize the work and the structure of ordinances to our advantage so that we're not constantly creating these one-offs of, well, this portion of a development property falls within the shoreline, so here's their regulations. And then as soon as we go across a property line, all of a sudden we're at a completely different set of regulations. And I think the the Woodbury example that I provided in your packet does a really good job of balancing that. Um, we'll go into a little bit more, but I just, I think the whole intent of why we started revising our ordinances would, was to be more predictable. Um, and the way the state set up their model ordinance, again, trying to deal with the state as a whole. Um, so I think it would be in our best interest to set up some mechanics that really allow us to just use our straight zoning when it's appropriate to do so. Um, and if people elect not to use the straight zoning or some other mechanics that we might talk about in a little bit, I think we should still um, align ourselves with where the model ordinance is going in terms of if you're not doing kind of a trade-off in open space and some of that repairian uh, dedication or preservation, you probably do need some larger lot requirements just so that we're not increasing the intensity of use within that that critical shoreline area. Does that make sense? So a couple of examples really quick before we get into um, kind of what direction we should head. This is the Lake Point Development. So Carl Cry Lake, this was a natural environment late, lake. All the area within that purple was an outlot dedicated to the city, so a lot of that repairian dedication. Little bit hard to see, see here, but there's a line drawn from that high water level that's just outside the lake uh, into the lot, and you can see what that hundred and fifty foot setback looks like. So a little over uh, three-fourths of that distance, that setback distance was preserved in that outlot. Um, and then all the lots ended up being fairly uniform in terms of size. Um, this would be consistent with our R1 district. Um, but because it was done as a PUD, so if we had a proposal for a PUD in the future, how it ends up working, if you paid attention to um, this is usually on the preliminary plat, and then we provided a, a a sheet that outlined at final plat what this tier density calculation is. So when the state talks about PUDs are allowed, but here's kind of a a density multiplier. They're looking at this kind of trade-off, preserve the repair and area, and then as you get a certain distance away, an incremental distance away from that high water level, you're allowed to increase density because you're trying to stay as low as possible the closer you are to that high water level. Um, so this just kind of broke down those tiers, so it pulls out suitable versus non-suitable area for development. Um, it's a bunch of math. I'm not gonna try to go line by line with you, but generally you can see what was allowed based upon how the state um, views density within each of those tiers. So this being a tier, this being a tier, and this being a tier. Um, we ended up with less than what the max allowed was just because we were also looking at how does it relate to our existing uh, residential district provisions. We weren't necessarily saying, yep, this one's gonna be all small lot, just because you preserve kind of this repairing area. Um, it was more of a fit the mold and um, balance all of our objectives at once.
Ben, can, just before you go off that slide.
Yep.
So this is specific to the water body, but doesn't necessarily take the wetland into, in the, in account.
The wetland gets pulled out in terms of for each of those tiers. If there's a wetland within that tier, the area of the wetland that falls in there is pulled out.
Yep.
Um, so it does acknowledge that other things happen within those tiers, so you're really dealing with the developable portion within each of them.
But the tiers are established based on the boundary of the water body.
Correct. And there's different tier distances based upon that lake classification. So the tiers are smaller or the distance is smaller on a recreational development or a general development versus a natural environment has bigger uh, tier distances. Again, just trying to keep density lower in those circumstances.
Does, does water quality or water classification impacted by tiers at all?
It, it doesn't currently. Um, and the reason for that is because they're managed differently. So if you have an impaired lake, what you're doing to improve the impairment doesn't always translate because you put X number of houses within a thousand feet of it. Um, a lot of it has to do with probably conditions or um, whether it's fish species that are in the lake, other things that have happened there. There's degradation happening physically within the lake that needs to get managed outside of necessarily development. Does development help prevent some of that? In some cases, in some cases, it's more of the um, AIS management where it's really what boats are going in, going out, watercraft is going in, going out, that might be carrying something from one lake to another. Um.
What does AIS stand for?
Quadic invasive species.
So and you're, you're, with that, you're also dealing with two different government agencies, correct? The watershed district and the DNR.
Yeah, I mean, the DNR does have provisions, but usually that's passed along to the local watershed authority to to manage those. Every watershed does it a little bit different also, so um, something to keep in mind. But I, I haven't seen a shoreline uh, district ordinance that specifically deals with water quality as a reason why you do one type of development versus another. Any other questions before I flip this slide? Okay, the other example that we started talking about, uh, Waterford Landing. You see the, the red tiers going away from Schutz Lake, um, similar to this is a recreational development lake. Um, and then this blue line, there's a tributary that goes from Schutz Lake up to uh, Smithtown Bay on Lake Minnetonka. So this blue line is actually the three hundred foot um, measurement away from where that tributary line is through the wetland that's just north of the lake body itself. So a lot of uh, the property fell within that shoreline overlay district. The purple area is that outlot that was preserved, but ended up being owned by the um, association, the homeowners association. So a little bit different, and not that it's completely foreign. If you recall, there's um, repairian lots that are owned, um, Lake Zumbra has a couple of them. Um, there's a number of lots along uh, Smithtown Bay, actually, that are owned by associations, just providing common um, lake access to non-repairian lot owners. Um, but this did also a pretty good job. All the bluff lines ended up being preserved within that outlot. Um, there's a conservation easement put over top of it that spelled out what could or couldn't be done within that area in terms of removing um, vegetation or um, any other improvements that falls within there. But not a circumstance like the previous examples we looked at on the south side of Wasserman where the outlot was deeded to the city for management. Um, one of the things that we should also think about when we discuss this kind of repairian dedication or preservation is because we have so many lakes, and if we have a lot of development potential still remaining around areas that we may annex into, how much of that open space really should be in the hands of the city in terms of there is responsibility that comes with property ownership? Um, not to say that there might be reasons why we'd still assume it. Um, but at least need to be cognizant that just because we take property doesn't mean that it's out of sight, out of mind. It's actually, we get quite a bit of questions from people that live next to them of what can or can't we do? Because it's public, can we walk through it to get to a lake? Um, clear a path to get down to it. All those questions still come into play. So it's not necessarily a bad thing to think about what private ownership of some of those repairian lots might be like. Um, but I think this was probably a good example of how to treat it in terms of that conservation easement, where if we're really trying to preserve that property, property owners change, leadership within an association can change. So if we have other backup requirements that kind of memorializes the intent of why that property was originally preserved to begin with, that's probably a good thing uh, to keep moving forward.
Just to clarify, to help me understand this map, it's listing six tiers here. Is the first one the outlot in the purple?
The first tier would be, so if you see the blue line is the general edge of the lake. This is one, two, three, four. And then there, there would have been five, I don't think I, it's right here, is the other tier.
Okay.
So it keeps going based upon what that distance requirement is. So until you hit that thousand feet, you're still within it.
So they, they included that for whatever reason, up to the road.
Correct.
Away or whatever it is.
Yep.
Okay.
Still a portion of the lot that's in it, so they have to.
Just.
It's a small portion, I think.
Just not buildable.
Twenty-six thousand square feet total.
Correct.
So then the gross area and then minus all the other stuff, the bluff area, controlled access, wetland, might subtract all that. That's your suitable buildable area?
Correct. And within all those tiers, they were allowed under the, just the straight DNR requirements to have a hundred and one units, and they ended up with thirty-two.
I'm try, I'm trying to visualize how this is working for us, though, right? So like, when you, I understand the goal is to minimize density nearest the lake. So if we look at zone one or tier one.
Mm-hmm.
And there's eight units allowed, which, you know, visually, when I look at that um, site plan, you couldn't fit more, much more than two more units than what was already.
Right, unless it was a different housing type.
Okay, so that's the visual I'm missing is that that's based on the lot as it was proposed and the product type, but had this requirement not been there, this theoretically could have come with sixteen units.
Right.
At a much smaller.
If you related back to what the DNR set theirs up, they always had single, a duplex, a triplex, and a quad. So could have been a couple of quads within that first tier that would have made up some units because the lots themselves would have been bigger, but you're doing more units per lot. So they probably could have gotten fairly close to that hundred and one total within the development if this was proposed as a series of quads.
Okay, so in many, in many ways, these requirements shaped the size of the lots, which, you know, the allowable units versus the proposed units are very different, but it basically it was set up. It's working because it it's set the criteria for the lot size and and the product type throughout the development, even though we're not seeing a necessary change in density as we move away from the the water body.
Correct.
Okay.
So we transition a little bit over to that Woodbury example. So just to kind of get everyone into the details I was hoping you picked up on, I know that the structure of some of their tables a little bit cumbersome to read. So I try to highlight uh, things to focus on on the next couple of slides. But one example, Colby Lake, there, this is a recreational development lake. Woodbury in their ordinance also has certain lakes that are required to dedicate a, a riparian area. So they, they spell out all the the lakes that are within their community, and they've said from a hundred feet uh, toward that high water level, that needs to be dedicated in these circumstances. From a hundred feet uh toward that high water level, that needs to be dedicated in these circumstances for these lakes. Um, and then they set up the rest of their regulations within uh the ordinance based upon that platform. That in some cases, they require riparian dedication and other cases, they don't. Um, so in red, you'll see what the riparian dedication requirement is. And then what I've highlighted in blue, anything below that has to do with non-riparian dedication. So in this case, all riparian dedication, you can see that they did a pretty good job of being able to sustain that tree line that was around the property. And then that kind of subtle white line that follows it is a, a trail that they happen to see around their. Uh, lake here and then a small park, this is actually the south side, north is to our right. Um, so if riparian dedication is required and we're looking at the structure setback from the high water level. Across the board, regardless of this is a general development lake, um recreational development lake or a natural environment lake. They're requiring two hundred feet is the closest any setback can be. If I compare that for you to what our current regulations are for general development and recreational development. Our uh structure setback is a hundred feet, natural and environment, lake is a hundred and fifty feet. So as a community, even though the minimums from the state are less, they said, we want the riparian to be dedicated. In these circumstances for these lakes, plus we're increasing the setback because we want to preserve even further beyond just that riparian dedication. So they have a little bit more stringent dedications um than what we'd be required to through the state. So riparian dedication not required, and there aren't many examples in their city that they elected. Uh, to not take the riparian dedication, but in those circumstances, they still split regulation between what's sewed and what's not sewed. You can see requirements more stringent for unsewed um properties around. A non-riparian dedication lake than a, a sewed. And then down below, you can also see that trade off in terms of intensity where without the riparian dedication. They have what we would probably view as a fairly typical impervious surface coverage for every lot within that um shoreline district. And then with the riparian dedication, they allow for an increase because they have a higher level of general preservation from the, the project as a whole.
See Ben, I'm, I'm, I'm missing something, but what triggers whether dedication is required or not?
They just spelled out in a table, I think if you have that sample ordinance, I'll point you to the page. So page one, which is actually the back page to the first one. So you see in this chart, they name off all of their lakes and then that far right column, hundred and fifty foot riparian dedication required. Whether it's, if it says yes, they require it for every property around that, that lake.
And it's based by water body.
Correct.
Should that, should that read two hundred feet based on this chart?
So they're. They're dedicating a hundred and fifty feet. This regulation that's highlighted here is the structure setback from the high water level, so. They're taking a hundred and fifty feet of the property, the, the community is. But they're also saying, we, even though we're taking a hundred and fifty feet, we another fifty foot setback from any structure. So some of it is probably to help manage encroachments that could occur over time. Uh, if they made it thirty feet or twenty feet uh from even kind of what they own. We see it quite frequently that people use properties to the fullest extent they're allowed. Um, so probably that fifty foot was just another kind of cushion, so to speak, to help keep people away from that, that repair.
They inventoried all their lakes and said, these lakes, we want dedication, these we don't, and for those that we do, these are the setbacks that we want to have.
Correct. So then they also break down some of those lot size requirements. So if riparian dedication is required, so if they're taking that hundred and fifty feet, they just across the board, regardless of it's. A different lake classification, they say, just follow our typical, our standard zoning district. We've already taken the part that we care the most about, so now just follow these regulations that we're very comfortable with. The same time, if they don't take riparian dedication, um they have some provisions that. Are similar probably to a lot of their standard zoning practices, but are likely larger and more similar to what you'd see in the states. Uh, example or model ordinance. With the exception of this T is tributary, so we do also have some tributaries in the city that fall within the shoreline district. They've also defaulted all of those that because they're already preserving kind of that uh setback requirement from them. That they were fine with all those properties still abiding by the, the base zoning and the, the way that the state's model ordinance is set up. Still allowed to do that there as well. This is the provisions within their shoreline overlay district that talks about uh PUDs and riparian dedication. Versus non-riparian dedication, the example illustration here, this is where you can start to see whether they're actually duplexes. Or if they're kind of that single attached unit. On one side, they have kind of that along two sides of the lake, they also have some row homes. Within a thousand feet, they've also got some multifamily and probably some mixed use going on, and then some single family on another part of that. Um, project, so they were able to utilize their provisions to still see kind of a mixed. PUD around the lake itself, I don't believe any of these were actually done as one PUD. Um, but still through their regulations, we're allowed to see kind of that mixed use happen. Um, that will probably become somewhat applicable to Victoria as we maybe grow into closer to Pearson's Lake. There may be some opportunity to see something other than just a straight single family zoning within a thousand feet of uh that water body. And then when riparian dedication is not required, this is where you see something, what, what they elected to do. That's similar to kind of those calculations we walked through that are in the state's model ordinance. So they say, if you're not dedicating riparian access, we still want the least amount of density, the closer we are to the lake. And then you're allowed to increase density in your PUD proposal, uh the further you get away. So fifty percent density increase and they'll have provisions similar to what we've had. Where you're still doing a PUD and probably have to preserve some percentage of the total project in open space. They may still require some other things, but they're not full sale requiring that hundred and fifty foot dedication. All the way around the perimeter of the lake. Any questions here? So kind of the, the start that I put uh into the packet of information for you was that initial matrix. And one of the things I really appreciated about what Woodbury did is kind of they, they have enabled themselves. To utilize their base zoning as much as possible. And if you go through their list and if we were to go to, to Google or something, kind of go around their community. In the, the more developed, recently developed um portions. A lot of these lakes where they've required that riparian dedication is where they've seen the most development. Um, and it seems to be somewhat of a trend even for Victoria, that as we've seen development around these lakes, lakes. It's been a very rare occurrence that we've seen a full re- riparian lot uh being constructed. That Lakeside Estates is really the most recent example that we've seen that. Before that, it would have been some of the lots around uh Watermark. That had some. So keeping with the intent of our general ordinance revisions, what's a strategy that the state will likely say. Upholds the intent of that model ordinance, but also allows Victoria to see development happen the way it has. This top one and what I outlined in, in red, but that green color uh behind it, riparian preservation provided. That term preservation provided, I'm still curious to understand what you all think in terms of should it always be dedicated to the city? Or should it generally be a discussion on a case by case basis of let's just preserve the property in some kind of an outlot? And put some criteria in place of what's supposed to happen with it. And if we have that preservation of whatever that distance around a lake needs to be. Let's utilize that existing zoning district to our benefit, because I think that's very predictable, people understand it. And then it won't be one other complexity when proposals are made of, well, this handful of lots falls into this. Different situation and the rest of them can abide by our traditional zoning characteristics. And then below that, if we don't have the re- the riparian preservation provided. Similar um sizes for the riparian lots to what we have in place today. Again, this is only looking at general development lakes, of which we really only have one that would. Need to comply with this in uh Smithtown Bay. But you can see some of those lot areas tend to be larger for riparian, non-riparian, still a little bit larger than our minimums. That are even in our R one district. And then certainly if it's unsewed, we're not allowing for higher density uses. And looking for those even larger lots to accommodate some of the other things like well and septic that may be necessary for that property.
Ben, are you suggesting that um we or the city would dictate when riparian preservation is required or not?
I think there's a couple of ways that we could approach it. I think we could definitely set up the ordinance where we said, if you do preserve the riparian lot, we can specify what that means. That you're allowed to follow our standard zoning practices for everything other than the riparian preservation area.
Yeah, so that you're giving, you're giving a choice to the developer.
So if you're not going to, then you're gonna have to figure out which portions of your property need to comply with these. Elevated lot requirements. Cause all of these requirements that are spelled out down below are larger than what our. If our R one is our largest lot development, they're more significant than what the R one district calls for.
So are you, so are you suggesting that this would be set up in a way that would be appealing to go with the riparian? To provide the preservation?
I think it's appealing depending on whatever a particular developer's objective is. Again, there might be some developers that really feel like some, having some riparian lots similar to Lakeside Estates is something that they want to do. And I think if, if our community is comfortable with that approach, given that they're probably going to be larger lots. Than what everything else would be, let's just put that in that if you basically pick your path. You can have all the lots that are of probably more common size if you provide riparian dedication. If you don't, there's probably going to be a little bit more work, but if your objective is to have some lots that are riparian. Here's your path forward that still meets our other objectives.
Thank you, and just one more question related to that then is um. Maybe you said this, but is there a different attitude for the lake classification? So whether it's a natural environment lake or a, um, I mean that, so one philosophy could be. For example, the city could say that we want to require the riparian preservation approach for natural environment lakes. But for recreation or general development lakes, it's, there's more of the, the option exists.
Sure.
I mean, that would be one.
Yep.
Approach.
We could absolutely set up the ordinance that way.
So just so I'm clear too, what we're suggesting for discussion here is not necessarily to be prescriptive on what Woodbury did. Identify the lakes, say dedication is required here, 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 but rather structure ordinance in a way that provides options. And if they provide an option where they do the dedication, then there's a potential benefit of having standard zoning at a higher density. If they choose not to, there's an option to still, obviously to develop the property, but to develop it. At a larger lot, regulations that we would feel comfortable would protect those, those resources.
Correct. And I, I'm still open to the idea that we, we may see that there's. A reason that we would list off, almost to Jeff's point. If we said all of those natural environment lakes need riparian dedication, we could have a table very similar to that. But you'd just see that it's all the natural environment lakes.
That's some of the feedback you're seeking tonight, right?
Right.
One scenario is to, is to list the lakes and what the intent is.
Correct.
The other scenario could be, um, well, we, we really actually want to require riparian preservation on natural environment lakes. But leave it as an open option for general, for recreational lakes.
Correct.
There might be another option in which says, another scenario where you can have the option on, on all lakes. And there's probably, you know, a few other scenarios.
Didn't the DNR require us to inventory our water, our lakes if we had a watershed overlay?
Well, I think we'll still.
Yeah, we still have, we still have to identify all of them, but whether or not we require some kind of dedication to the, to the city. Or preservation through some kind of lot. That's not able to be built on or significantly built on, I think that's the direction I'm looking for. Cause we have that ability to kind of identify the, the path that we want to take and how that's accomplished. It doesn't have to be one or the other, it could be written in, in a manner where you basically have both options. Or we might just harden fast that every type of lake that's under this classification has to do one or the other.
So staying on the riparian preservation portion of it. Um, as far as how it is dedicated, if it is dedicated to the city. I mean, wouldn't we look for, if, if they did want to dedicate it to us as an outlaw, wouldn't we want to look for some benefit from that and not just cost? Such as maintaining it, if it's a slope or if it's something that needed the pruning and grooming. An, a functional way of governing something like that is what benefit does it bring the city as opposed to the cost to owning it for no other reason than just preservation?
Correct.
A, as opposed to their uh neighborhood owning that and preserving it under our guises or the DNRs or whoever regulates that.
So is it more of an ownership question?
Yeah, I, for, that's where I'm leaning with that part of it, it's always in my thought, because every time we take an outlaw in for no reason that has no use other than access. That we need for maybe one of our ponds or something, that costs us money as a city. And to be more efficient, if we can reduce that by not owning these and having the homeowners association own them and maintain them. Uh, is just my thoughts of more functional and keep the tax burden down and the workload down for the city itself. So like on Lake Wasserman, you showed that s- small sliver. That's a bluff there, isn't it? Or is that the trailing edge of that?
Um, there is some bluff there, it's also some of the, the wetland buffer that kicks in the further east you go.
So that's an outlaw dedicated to the city.
Correct.
Why? That, that's what.
So historically, it would have been part of that balance of yes, you're in the shoreline overlay district, you're also doing a PUD. We did have a kind of hardened fast line previously in our PUD that you had to dedicate, dedicate fifty percent. Of the property in open space to do a PUD. So in some cases, we were looking at where are those properties that make the most sense for us to own? Um, on this property, the Wasserman Lake Woods one, there's this significant wetland that's kind of on the lower portion of that screen as well. So that was taking away developable property, so I'm sure this particular developer was trying to balance. How many lots do I need to just offset costs of infra- infrastructure and make a profit? Even though I'm foregoing what my neighbor did in trying to have some riparian lots. Even though, as I indicated, there is that bluff line that goes through here, cuts through a couple of these larger lots. But that was just the, the choice that was made, or the trade off.
Okay, yeah, I.
Just out of curiosity, Todd, what, what is the maintenance that would be required?
Uh, buckthorn removal, the stuff that the DNR, the watershed comes through and says you have to do invasive species, once again, non-waterborne. But shoreline uh species, um, I don't know.
The other thing that.
High water one year and the, the bluff caves in and you have to resettle the shore or rip rapid, anything like that shoreline, it could be.
The biggest things that we get calls about, I would say on a more routine basis, have to do with, if there were trees that were dead. Even before the, the lot was dedicated to the city, there are people that um don't like the look of the dead trees. Or because it's a public lot, there's this ambiguous understanding for a lot of people of, well, it's public property, I'm a taxpayer, so that's why I'm gonna go down to the lake. So a lot of them are walking by it and then they're seeing that as a potential hazard, so they get some concerns, cause. In a lot of cases, you get younger families that are moving into these developing areas. Or they have grandkids, whatever the case may be. Um, that and just general lake access questions. So if it is public property, can I use it, where can I use it, what can I do to? Help my, myself and my neighbors get from point A to point B the most efficient way possible.
Actually, I'm seeing in Kells or Pond and I've got, I've got a call from Holly one day, we had a nice discussion. Um, we have a home we're selling and the neighbor with this particular party wanted to. Get rid of some of the dead trees, get rid of some of the invasive species out there to clean it up. So we hired it. We're, gotta come out and clean some of that stuff up, we just took the dead stuff, we just took the buckthorn. And we redirected very quickly, we had a nice conversation, we got back on the same page, but there's this stuff. When the people bought their home, they put up their extensive housing project there, they had a view. And with nobody maintaining the view.
Mm-hmm.
Is it the city's problem, is it their problem, if they try to fix it, is the city gonna come down on them, what are the rules around that? Clarify those rules would be helpful, I think a lot of folks that are buying into these communities and paying a premium to have that view. And have that lot would be very helpful with, cause you see more and more of the dedication on a regular basis.
And, and I just don't see the city, we're not really in the business of owning land either, uh, I mean. Unless it's needed for our infrastructure and to operate the city. As far as owning outlots that are non-functional, uh, it seems.
So it.
Irrelevant that we have those or if we can avoid having those for those reasons.
The project I seen.
Where in this case, it didn't sound like that was possible necessarily to balance this project, but.
Project I seen in McConia, McConia Shore specifically, um, the developer. Was able to trade off a dedication um to create higher density. Create a lot of tax base for the individual lot holders. But the city, in exchange for that, asked the association to maintain it with limited dock access. To that lake, now they have their little private beach and limited access to it, but now the association's required to maintain that three, four hundred feet, whatever it was. Eight, ten years ago, but.
It seems like. This whole philosophy is based on like the fundamental question about as a city. Do we believe that that stretch of land that is along lake shore actually is functional? Right, like I, I know what you're saying, it's non-functional, but if. If as a city, we believe the science that says that setbacks and limited development along the shoreline is what protects. The water and preserves the water and, and allows the water, the waterways to, to either. Stay healthy or increase their little healthiness, then it's actually functional, right, so.
It's a different level of function.
Right, if we, but if we believe that that strip of land along the lake shore is functioning or actually doing something. For you as a city or for the community. Like I think we, everybody has to get on, on the same page of whether or not the, the belief is that it's actually doing something for you. Because then you can decide what you place the value, what's the value of that function?
Correct.
Because it's a trade off, cause if you're gonna, if you, if you believe it's doing something for you and it's valuable to you as a city. Then you're willing to recognize that the trade off is the city now has to incur the expense to maintain it. And um then for me, it leads to the next question, which is. Depending on what you think that's doing for you, then that may dictate who you want to maintain it. Because if, it seems to me like the success of that philosophy depends on. A shared understanding of what the common goals and how to maintain and how that works and what to do to it to make it work. That can't necessarily be. Achieved, well, maybe it could be, but it would take a lot, a lot of really stringent criteria to state what actually, how it needs to be maintained and when and by, by whom. With individual property owners and associations and um. That in itself seems like a management challenge to allow lots of different entities to try to. Maintain these properties in a way that has a shared vision.
Well, they, it's a massive challenge because the definition of value changes dramatically depending on whose eyes are looking at it. I mean, DNR's gonna look at it one way, see it one way, developer, the landowner, the owner of the property. That definition continues to evolve, this, this is an interesting conversation, it's very complex.
And if it's an association that's responsible for managing it. Are, are they gonna have the same vision that the city may have and will it be? They may want to be more aggressive with the maintenance that may not be in line with the city's expectations. They wanna tear out the vegetation out, or they may be more likely less on it, and then it becomes more of a nuisance for a community with. Views and access and, and other problems.
I, I think, leading further into that though, but this, once again, almost to my point. Is that there's people that do this type of setup programs just like this for shore preservation. To get the optimum benefit out of it. Uh, what's gonna be best when that water runs off through this weed, that weed, that tree, that rock? To the water itself, the water level itself, how, what's the best way to treat that? There's people that do that for a living, Minnehaw Watershed's one of them, the DNR has programs like that, the U of M has it. Um, that's something, that's a scientific thing more than what we can do as a city. Our, our city workers, good hard workers, they're not gonna go out there and know exactly how to pick through that or set up a program for that, that's not their department at all. And, and the fact that they can't get to it, well, because we had to plow extra snow this year, or we had to do this that year. And it's not gonna be a budgeted thing either, it's gonna be a complaint based thing if the city owns it, that's how it's gonna come about. Is that it's overgrown, like you were saying, or, you know, well, if it's done within the association itself, if they own that. And we require them to establish a program that's accepted by the people that run the watersheds. Uh, maybe that's a way of appeasing that.
Todd's point, doesn't the DNR, the watershed district look at every development that's in that riparian zone?
Yeah, so I mean, if, if we use Waterford Landing as kind of the example of what association's gonna step in. If you recall, there was a very specific area only. That was able to be kind of programmed with development where they were providing an access, they had still um some. Private uses going closer to the lake, but the, by and large, the majority of that outlaw. Was preserved in a conservation easement, and that easement document, it's not just putting. Like a dimension on some kind of a, an exhibit that says this area is a conservation, the easement document itself says. This is the intent, this is what can and can't be done in it. And it, it's actually fairly straightforward, and I, I don't know that whether we allow associations to. Acquire some of these riparian properties or the city owns them, that the, there's a big difference in them. Aside from the fact that for the most part. Any property that ends up being under the control of an association tends to have a higher level of success in consistently maintaining what they're allowed to maintain. Than what the city is gonna do, cause our priority, if, to Todd's point, if we're balancing everything that we're trying to accomplish. We might be consistent in the fact that we're there maybe once or twice a year. For all the properties around the city versus the HOA is gonna have more eyes on it. Particularly if there's some kind of public access to know, well, this area needs this kind of thing, and they might still call us and say. How do we go about managing buckthorn? Um, we've got this whole swath of trees that has died out. Are we okay to remove that, how do we get access down to remove that without impacting maybe a bluff? Those types of things. I still think there's gonna be dialogue with the city and it's still gonna be. Some level of work, so to speak, to kind of manage these properties, whether we own them or someone else does, but I. I do think just getting down to that principle of. Should we go to this extent of trying to preserve them and not allow them to be instead of? One riparian lot, it's seventeen. I mean, that's probably the bigger thing I'd like to focus on tonight is. Do we generally agree that it's better management practice to try to encourage some level of preservation or dedication? I guess who owns it is somewhat semantics, that's why I think. For me in my head, when I put this together, I'm still thinking that it's probably up to. An individual conversation depending on what the, the project is, where it's located, what lake we're talking about, kind of challenges it might have.
Yeah, I would agree, I think you bring up some really good points on ownership, it's almost like we left past the concept that we're talking about. Creating up that's important, now what do we do with the land once we have it?
Yeah.
So if we back it up a step and say, okay, are we on the same page for even?
But for all those, for all those reasons that you outlined, I mean, that's why it's important to have the conversation to begin with.
Always in the back of my mind, what's, what's in the future?
Oh, yeah, it's a very complex issue, it's kind of fun.
I didn't, of course, I, I am totally conservative when it comes to land use to begin with, uh, being the person I am and how. How we've destroyed most of the lakes in Minnesota already, starting with Lake Minnetoka. But, and I, that's why I appreciate this a lot and very concerned about it. Um, I've seen the water quality, the twenty-eight years I've lived here go down in some of these lakes in Minnetoka. And I think moving forward, we can control that a lot better now than we ever been able to just by this reason, so. Um, it's important to me, uh, overall, uh, sitting on this commission to make sure that we do conserve a lot of that shoreline, so.
The one thing I, that, that I haven't heard much talk about is the commercial side of stuff. I know there's not, I mean, going through the materials, obviously Woodbury's made, you know, made allowances for it. In our discussion today, we haven't talked too much about it, so I think what that might do is. It aligns with your thoughts, Ben, right, look at it on an individual basis. I don't know how much of this stuff is, really can be commercial. Uh, I mean, I, I don't, you, you can't see that far in the future, but I think it supports your thought about doing it much more on a. One by one basis so that you can go ahead and you can keep into, keep into account and align the thought on the commercial, on the commercial properties that could come up as well.
Yeah, really, really good thing to hit on, certainly our downtown, the existing portion of downtown falls within that shoreline overlay area, a thousand feet of the lake. Um, depending on what ends up happening with kind of the final adopted twenty forty comp plan. A lot of discussion happens down by ten and eleven of some other non-residential use. What that ends up being, we don't know, but there, there aren't any um lake shores that are down in that, that area. Probably have some tributaries that will have to be cognizant of. Um, we'll talk about that more, so there will be some overlap probably to some commercial use down in that area. But again, as we get into that comp plan development, there's gonna be some nodes that may fall into some of those outer rings. Of the lakes, because for the most part, we tend to aggregate, whether it's industrial or commercial uses closer to. Uh, high traffic intersections, and those naturally tend to, I mean typically, tend to be further away from lakes than. Other areas of development, so. We definitely should talk about it and happy to talk about it tonight, um. It's just not as pressing for our community at this point, aside from the downtown area that we have.
And, and with that case by case basis too, we really gotta be careful if all of a sudden three different developments come up and. We make sure we're looking at everybody equally and the same, I mean, that, that can get sticky real quick. If we forget something about one development or step over something and, you know, he says, well, they got to do it, but we didn't get, you know, one of those type of situations, so. Without having a base to go off of, a checklist to go off of, established things saying, no, they don't have it, no, they don't, yes, they do. Type of situation individually, just to give us a basis of how to look at everything needed or required.
Sure. Well, even if you have two routes that are options, there may, may still be some. Specific reasons why regardless of the fact that you have two paths, you may say you're only allowed to take this path for some portion of a property. Maybe if it has a bluff. Like maybe our community in general says, we're really concerned about impacts to, but we don't wanna see staircases, like your current ordinance allows for. People that provide lake access from their home by creating staircases or removing or impacting bluffs in certain ways, we may. Decide with this rewrite, we don't wanna see that happen. That area has to be preserved. I mean, again, there's so many different ways that this could go. I'd more curious to hear like what are we most concerned about?
And then they kind of like Commissioner Lotions point that the environmental lakes, you know, that were, obviously, conservation is key. You know, absolutely no stairwells and, I mean, the lakes that are gonna be recreated, the people gotta get down to it. They bought that la- lot with the understanding that they're gonna be able to use that lake, especially if they're riparian lots or. You know, or at least some type of access to it, so I think we're gonna generally have to see that type of development on the lake.
Sure.
But the lakes that need protection, that, that's our duty to protect those too, so.
Or at, at a minimum, recognize the values that our lakes and waterways have from a. From a use, a recreation and a use standpoint as well, right? Like it's, it's hard for me to envision a world where nobody can go near a lake at all. Right, I mean, lakes do certain things for us, but they're also very enjoyable for a variety of reasons, and so. Recognizing that that also has value and trying to find that balance. I think it's important to recognize the difference between lake classifications. And um let that guide some of the, the range of opportunities.
I'd agree with that.
I also like the concept of providing some options and then. Regulations to address those options in lieu of what we had in our matrix, I do think that. As, as opposed to identifying specific lakes and saying, this is allowable, this isn't allowable. Maybe with the exception of the natural area lakes or perhaps some other criteria that we think is important, I do like having that, those options available.
So just in general, I mean, if we're just gonna talk about what kind of this matrix looks like, is this? An approach that the majority of you think is the right general direction to go, I mean, we may. If, if something like the natural environment lakes is an area where we maybe wanna be hardened fast on requiring riparian. Uh, dedication is pretty simple with those that you just don't include the non-reparian dedication portion of that matrix.
The one thing that this doesn't take into consideration that we may wanna discuss is, you brought up some of these other. Natural features that occur around lakes, like, like bluffs and slopes and.
Mm-hmm.
You know, is that, I guess, is that addressed here in any way, and if not, how might we?
It's not currently. Um, more than likely, if, let's just say we use the term riparian preservation, that needs to get defined somewhere. And it may just have a requirement that follows that, that says there are certain conditions where we do require it, and there's other conditions where. We aren't going to require it. Steep slopes for me is always kind of the, the oddball that depending on how steep it is, like sometimes there are slopes that are just below being classified as a bluff. That. Can do a lot of damage really quickly if you have the wrong person in trying to alter even a, a sliver of that, that area. And then there's other portions of that steep slope that. Isn't as bad regardless of who's in trying to provide themselves an access to the lake, I mean, it's more manageable, I should say.
Um, so you're suggesting that be covered under the definition of riparian?
And probably have some, not actual asterisks, but there's probably some level of regulation that says. The city is going to require preservation in these circumstances. And there might be a smaller, instead of saying it by lake, it might be this type of condition has to be preserved. And it might be one or two. Might be if it's a bluff, might specify, is it just the bluff, the toe of the bluff? Is it the bluff impact area, like those are the things we can come back and kind of get a little more specific on, but I. It sounds like some of those things are what maybe we want to at least start to talk through.
And I, what, I've kind of figured out too, that our bluff impact zone, our language for that is just about spot on with what the state has in their.
Correct.
Model, so it. I don't know if there's much discussion that has to be done, I think me and Commissioner Lotion have been through this before, one, maybe six, seven, eight, nine years ago or whatever, but we went through this once and. We, it seemed like we, at that time, took that language from the state and put it in here, cause we really didn't have a great definition.
So then when you started this conversation tonight, you talked about a core goal of, um, I don't know how you said it exactly, but essentially simplifying. Or streamlining the, the chapter in terms of its communication. essentially simplifying or streamlining the, the chapter in terms of its communication. Do you feel like this is achieving that? And I'll just preface that, but the reason I'm asking is it, it feels like it, it definitely clarifies and simplifies when we go towards a riparian preservation, but it still feels like with the option of no riparian preservation that we're still having to have much of the complexities and, and the background supporting that approach. Similar to like what we have today.
Correct.
So does it?
I just, before I spent more time on creating more matrices and examples, so I wasn't gonna do the recreation and development lakes or the natural environment lakes until we decided at least generally, I wanted some feedback on, do we like the split approach? Do we want to see some late, like maybe natural environment lake is one that we don't necessarily wanna spend a lot of time on this non-reparian stuff, because we don't actually wanna see that happen. And that doesn't mean that everyone that owns property around those lakes today can't continue to use it as they have, but if a development proposal comes in, that's what the trigger is for kind of this next level of preservation. So I was generally hoping to get some feedback on, do we like the split approach? Do we like this idea of continuing to kind of preserve in, in a lot? That riparian distance, do you like even what, uh, Woodbury did in terms of they took the riparian dedication plus they increased that setback? I mean, there's probably some merit in thinking about how that might help some of the other things that we're trying to achieve within that critical area of the lake. It sounds like for the, there's some level of, yes, the riparian dedication seems like a good idea, but maybe not sure that encompasses all, other than maybe this natural environment thing, is that fair?
I think it's very fair, I like what you're seeing, um, I think we should preserve the preservation lakes, the non-recreational lakes and have a split approach to the recreational lakes. I think our next im- point of impact we're gonna deal with as a community is probably Lake Pearson, as far as recreational lakes, as far as order.
And that one, I'm not sure if it falls under recreation or general development, it's big enough that, and it has enough homes on it that it might sneak into, I mean, it's not much different than Bavaria.
Yeah, correct. So I like, I like what you've had in front of us, I think it's worth exploring.
I'll add that I, I feel like the spread, split approach is necessarily on, only in that I, I feel like it has to be based on lake classification. And to go to all riparian preservation for all lake types feels like a little bit of a reach for me. Because it takes away the flexibility to enable those to use the lake in, in a different way in, in the future, sure.
I like Todd's comments as well, is if we do do some sort of preservation model that it's owned by the developer, the association they control it versus city controlling it.
Well, I think we have to have some more conversation on what that really means, I mean, I generally, in principle, I like, I like the idea, but I think I'd like to better understand those pros and cons.
We can do that. I think our next go-around, we might focus less on kind of the top portion of these matrices that spell out non-reparian. If that's generally a, a thing that you're comfortable with, that you get a dedication, we'll figure out what that dedication is. But if we have it, we follow standard zoning, we'll probably spend more time on comparing, what does this condition mean relating to maybe some other developments in town? Like, is thirty thousand square feet too little, too much? Is it right? I think, I think we can talk about that at a, at a future date, for sure.
Maybe a suggestion just to, to consider is, um, it would be interesting to see either by existing examples or even just a, a plant, a sketch of a, of a plat.
Okay.
An example of the two scenarios. In terms of just anticipating, you know, if, before all of a sudden, say we go forward and that first development, you know, what, what's gonna look more appealing in terms of the, the, the lot layout and, and the approach? Either, either some existing examples that would fall into, to one versus the other, just as a, just as a visual. I think would be a good talking point for us to see what that means and
Yep. So this isn't perfect, but that is what I tried to do on this screen, actually. So Lake Point-
That's right, the, you know.
Lake Point is the one up here, so the blue line represents the riparian is everything outside those couple lots right there. And then I think this is the south side of Schutz, I just flipped it. Lot width is different between the two, just 'cause timing of development on them is very different. I think these are probably ninety to a hundred foot wide lots, and these are all, I believe I believe they're all eighties. Well, that kind of shows, I mean, similar product is gonna end up going on the two properties. The impervious surface coverage as an example, so the lot coverage on these lots is gonna be higher, it's thirty-five percent, whereas the ones down below are twenty-five. So I mean, there's a balance, it's just 'cause you're getting a larger lot, doesn't mean you're like maximizing development potential. Um, but we do get quite of, quite a bit of variation in how private use and treatment looks along those edges where we've had riparian, um, lots created. Anything from either a natural edge of manicured edge, a beach edge. All those things come into play, and where people have had the ability to create an actual boat launch, private boat launch, they do. Whether it's put in gravel or if it's just driving across the grass, though, a lot of people have taken upon themselves to create their own rights, so to speak, to ac- access, uh, lakes independently. But we could certainly provide some more examples.
No, the, thanks for pointing that out, I, I was seeing those-
It is really up close.
I was seeing, I was seeing those examples as, you know, being good to show the, the concept of the non- riparian versus riparian with that, um, outlot, but I wasn't thinking of it as a demonstrating the a platted development.
Sure.
But you are starting to, to touch on that here, so that's good. And it sounds like one of your next steps is to go through this exercise for the other lake classifications?
Yeah, it's-
And so it would be interesting how that would evolve.
Okay.
In terms of your examples, if there, if there are some that could help us see that.
Sure.
The devil will come out in the detail, right? That's what we'll end up seeing more than anything.
Well, and the other thing that's a little bit more interesting for us, for just the timing compared to when a lot of other communities just jumped onto the model ordinance and adopted it, is I think Todd or Jeff, either one of you might have said it at the beginning of the meeting, we got a lot of different building types that we consider today that weren't addressed in nineteen ninety-nine. And you can see it started to add those in on this matrix. But just thinking about what's, what's an acceptable si- size of a lot for the traditional single-family lot compared to what we'd now call a vi- villa, or we put in our ordinance as that association single-family.
Again, it gets more-
Like, is it the same if they want a riparian lot? Is it a little bit less? Because again, the people that are buying those kind of villa products are not interested in maintenance, but they might want access.
There was also the issue of buying two lots and combining
Sure.
one property percentages of what you could cover. It, it'll start getting into all that kind of detail, which apparently I seem to be going to in my head, right, talking about commercial and multiple lots with a single owner and, and all those types of things, so all those details would have to get flushed out. Um, and you guys are better at that than I am, but this approach I like, right, this way you can see it out. Planners, developers, they'll, they'll all see where they can go. And then, and then as the details come up, because they talked about variants a lot too, and, and in all the documentation that was presented too, so that, that would go back to, you gotta look at stuff on a case-by-case basis as well.
Ben, I was picking up on some of your commentary about the riparian lot scenario in terms of the, uh, let's say perceived lack of control.
Yeah.
Should that be evaluated? I mean, I, I remember, you know, Todd, you mentioned whether it was seven or eight years ago, when we started evaluating that as well in terms of, um, how much of a path can be cleared to the lake and what, how the lake can be treated and what some of the intents are and does that need to be reevaluated again, as kind of a hybrid approach?
And I'll, I'll be the first one to say I totally believe in property rights. There's just a little bit different expecta- I mean, even coming into a city versus living out in more of a rural area, living in a community of people, you're trying to have more organization, and again, it's even back to the expectation thing. If I move into this community, if they can have X, I wanna have X, is usually what people are gonna look at. So I don't know that I wanna go back and kind of retrofit where maybe some poor things have happened. But it may be just, again, thinking about where we might grow into, that should we be allowing for people to create their own access if a public access exists? If one doesn't, that's maybe a different conversation, but if you've already got a public access to launch your boat, you can create your dock, that's your, yours only, but why do you need to put your boat in if there's already a designated place? And then that kind of overlaps a little bit on the discussion of just the water quality and some of those invasive species discussions, is one location easier to manage than a bunch of private ones? So it's kind of a ripple effect, but it's a worthwhile discussion, at least to have in the context of creating this ordinance. Whether we do anything different than how it is today, I don't know is necessary, but definitely all those factors are things while we're on the subject, that probably need to be talked about.
I totally agree, we need to definitely dive into it deeper, if you're getting back to the Kelsner Plan thing. At some point, we're just kind of a sober grown canopy that we can't touch. As a resident of the community, or the city has to go and do something about it, and back to Todd's point, is that really something we want to do? We got this really cool park-type view out there in this community that's just not looking so parkers lately, if you follow the rules.
Well, is that, in that example, has the city been receptive?
I believe it was.
Clearing the view or clearing the dead trees or?
It just depends, it, it's a real delicate balance, 'cause someone might say, I'd like to go remove buckthorn. I'd say generally the city has been receptive to removing those invasive species. But someone's definition of what buckthorn is and what the actual definition of buckthorn is might not always jive.
And what's a dead tree, what's a dead limb, what can we take out?
And one, one person wants a view and another person wants the natural vegetation.
And Woodbury's, you know, what I had read, that's what I was just looking for, shoreline alterations. Shore impact zones shall be maintained in a permanent vegetation or operated under an approved conservation plan consistent with the field office technical guides of the local soil and water conservation district, boom, right there.
Yep.
That's prescriptive as can be, and they have guidelines from every inch of land around this city, you know, they have a general idea of what they need and want and what can be removed. Now, whether or not people are gonna do it per that plan, that's a whole nother thing, that's an enforcement issue, but at least it's in place for us to use if we had something like that, and a guideline for that property owner.
Great job, and you guys bringing Woodbury yardage forward, 'cause it's pretty comprehensive, it's pretty well done.
I think I generally have good direction for getting something else put together and then come back with more information.
And if I can add one more thing to Commissioner Wolf's, with the commercial property, when I think of that, I think of somebody just having a larger lot on one of these lakes, especially getting towards Pearson's, and all of a sudden, they're gonna start renting jet bikes and wet bikes. Or maybe have a couple boats and canoes o- off that lot. You know, now we're not really residential, again, for the use of our lot, we're into a, maybe a retail com- commercial type situation. Oh, I need some gas, well, I got gas here, you know? So we have to have, we have to definitely think about that in the future as far as especially if we're gonna be annexing that property anytime soon, so. But tha- that's always in the back of my mind too, is the use of it like that is detrimental usually. You know, even though it's a service that's provided, you can usually get it off lake.
Anything else before we move on? All right, move on to the next item on the agenda, which is council meeting updates.
Just gonna remind myself what was on the last agenda.
I watched the first part of it.
Meadows, Wasserman Lakes, uh, did get approval. There ha- hasn't been a lot even, that was the only meeting we had since our last, correct? You can see on the claims or the consent agenda, we did have a resolution of support for Minnehaw Creek Watershed District. They're going through their comp plan, uh, process, a lot of what they've included that relates to Victoria has already been kind of vetted out since twenty fifteen, when we entered into a memorandum of, of understanding with them, identifying what our local objectives are to what the watershed district is trying to accomplish. So we've been kind of building for the past several years, kind of what our relationship should be and what we care about versus what they care about and how the two kind of overlap or intertwine. So a lot of what we've done there, we've already been a part of, it's not necessarily new, it's just now we're finally at their comp plan process where we haven't had something specifically written out in it since we entered into that MOU. Don't have a ton of other jurisdictions like Minnehaw Creek that will have, uh, those letters of support. As we grow, uh, particularly south, we'll kind of grow into Carver County WMO as another watershed district, to date, we've only had, um, Cheval that's developed in that watershed district. Um, but they'll have a significant part of that area south of Marsh Lake Road. So one group that I know they're still, uh, earlier on than where Minnehaw Creek is in assembling their comp plan. But as we get any of that information, just 'cause we're not as familiar with how that group operates, so to speak, we'll probably have more updates once we get to that point, uh, on where they're tracking with their stuff. Otherwise, that's what I have for council updates.
WMO stand for?
Water Management Organization.
Is that, that's a conglomerate, isn't it now? Didn't that just start up recently with Bassett Creek?
It's been the county, so when the legislation went into place, creating watershed districts, this is what I, not having everything in front of me, what I recall is that some counties elected to be the management company for certain territories, instead of creating a second, um, organization kind of from scratch, so to speak. So in our case, Carver County WMO, it's a smaller watershed than what, um, Minnehaw Creek deals with.
Sounds good, anybody else with council meeting update? Anything miscellaneous tonight?
I will not be present from the eighth, the twenty-fourth for this, for the twenty forty comp plan meeting.
If there's nothing else, I'll move that we adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Enjoy your evening.
Great discussion, guys.
Thank you.